Welcome to the Ordinary Council Meeting of Wyndham City Council. It's Tuesday, the 2nd of June 2020. This meeting is being held in the council chamber this evening, where social distancing rules have been put in place and seating has been arranged to reflect the advice of health authorities. On Friday, the 24th of April, the COVID-19 Omnibus Emergency Measures Act 2020 provides for council to meet and is deemed to be open to the public if the meeting is streamed live on the internet. In accordance with Sections 3951a of these provisions, the public are not attending the meeting in person, but are to watch the meeting via Facebook Live on Wyndham City Living. In the spirit of reconciliation, before we begin this meeting, I also acknowledge the peoples of the Coolan Nation as the traditional owners of the land on which Wyndham is being built. We pay our respects to their elders, past and present. Please stand for the opening prayer and welcome. We pray for guidance in the council's decision-making to achieve the best outcome for the people of Wyndham. Please be seated. Of course, wish to acknowledge councillors and staff that are here for this evening and note that this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed on the internet and the recording will be archived and made available on the council's website. Also wish to make a condolence remark. As councillors may be aware, one of our previous councillors, Peter Gibbons, passed away recently. And I would like to say a few quick words prior to commencing our official proceedings of tonight's meeting to reflect the important contribution he has made in our city. Peter and his wife, Robyn, moved to Wyndham in 1974, where they raised their children. As a strong believer in community and family, Peter has devoted his life to public service, having served 43 years in the police force, 10 of which were spent here in the local police, Werribee Police Station. He loved to chat and often introduced, indeed was introduced as an ex-copper. And that is, of course, in recognition of that exemplary service to the police force, having received the Australian Police Medal, APM, for distinguished service in the 2009 Queen's Birthday Honors List. During his time in the Victoria Police, Peter was known as someone who worked incredibly hard with groups and individuals to improve our local neighbourhood. And at the time of his retirement, he held the rank of Senior Sergeant. It was this strong work ethic and commitment to serving in our local community that led to him being elected to represent council in the 2012 to 2016 term in Irremu Ward. He was the inaugural portfolio holder of the Environment Sustainability, which enabled him to champion a range of initiatives and setting the agenda for what we define as being a more sustainable Wyndham today. Of those reforms, two of them comes to mind. It was the Environment Sustainability 2016 to 2040 and the Waste and Litter Strategy from 2016 to 2040. He championed the key assets in our city, including the Werribee River, our coastline, and the emerging, and most importantly, the Western Grassland Reserve. He was out and about and involved in a range of activities, whether it be the inaugural Garage Sale Trail to the compost revolution worm farm, that one's interesting, to helping plant trees on National Tree Day. And even before his time on council, he was known to turn the shovel at the Laverton Community Garden. He brought a wealth of knowledge and networks to his role as Chair of the Community Safety Roundtable and the Preventing Family Violence Subcommittee. And he was instrumental in so many ways across so many committees that simply a list that is so long, we'd be here till midnight. He was fondly regarded by each and every one of those committee members and also council officers for the commitment that he had made. As I mentioned, he's a highly regarded and well-respected member of our community. We thank him for all of his contribution over the course of his lifetime. And on behalf of Wyndham residents and my councillor colleagues, we acknowledge the tremendous contribution Peter made in our community to improve services and the quality of life for all of us who live here. Our heartfelt sympathies go out to his wife, Robyn, their four children and the grandkids. And out of respect, we'll do a one-minute silence to acknowledge Peter's contribution. So if I can ask all councillors in the room to stand, we'll do a quick minute's silence. Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Please be seated. Okay, we'll now move to item number two, apologies and respects for leave. Madam CEO, do we have any apologies or requests for leave?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And whilst we don't have any apologies or requests for leave this evening, it is important for us to note that this afternoon we received a resignation from councillor Kim McElhany, effective immediately. So councillor McElhany has stepped down from her role as councillor in the Harrison Ward, effective today. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. Item number three, declaration by councillors of disclosure of conflict of interest and/or conflicting personal interest in any items of the agenda. Councillors, are there any conflicts of interest that you wish to declare in relation to tonight's agenda? Councillor Marcus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the confidential agenda, item 13.2.
Thank you, Councillor Marcus. Are there any other conflicts of interest being declared? Nope, there being none. As a matter of public record, for purposes of recording this, I intend to note that under Section 78b, I intend to exercise a vote and debate on item 7.2 of the tonight's agenda. So if that can be noted, that would be appreciated. Thank you, councillors. Okay, we'll now move to item number four, confirmation of minutes of previous meeting, that the minutes of the Ordinary Council meeting held on Tuesday, the 5th of May 2020, as prepared and circulated, be confirmed. Councillors, do I have a mover of the item? Councillor Gibbons, secondaire councillor, Maynard. I'll now put it to a vote. All those in favour? Against? Carry. On five deputation presentations, there are nil. Item number six, 6.1, petitions. Madam CEO, I believe we have a petition this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the 14th of May 2020, council received a petition signed by 77 people addressed to Wyndham City Council. The petition states, "The following petitioners draw the attention of the council to seek help on Wyndham City Council rates for those who are suffering and facing hardship due to COVID-19. This pandemic has affected everyone, including our local business owners, employees and their families. It has also had an impact on local residents and so on, and owners and employees of businesses in Wyndham who have lost their jobs or had hours reduced. Therefore, the following residents' petitioners hereby request Wyndham City Council to consider giving a fee waiver on council rates for up to a certain percentage or on a case-by-case basis to residents facing hardship. We hope this will enable residents to cover the unbearable and unexpected losses during the crisis to some extent." So, Mr. Mayor, we're suggesting that Wyndham City Council notes the petition and will prepare a report to respond for the next council meeting on the 23rd of June 2020. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Thank you. As it's noted, we'll now move to item 6.2, Strategic Report, 6.2.1, the Quarter Three Financial Report. The report is outlined on pages seven to 12, recommendation on page eight with the attachments on pages 13 to 24. Do I have a mover for the item? Councillor Khan, do I have a secondaire? Councillor Gibbons, councillor Khan, do you wish to speak on the item? You do? You have five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, it's a third quarter financial management report, which is outlined on page nine of 71. We, operating expenses, Mr. Mayor, $270 million. We're budgeted and we have, which is revenue should be received, but we received $263 million, which is a $7.3 million is unfavorable, as per the management report. Now, in relation to operating expenditure, we suppose we're budgeted $279.4 million. We've spent $270 million, .2 million, which is a favorable, so because we budgeted $279 million and we end up spending $270 million. So that gave us a bit of a, 9.2 million are favorable. Now, Mr. Mayor, we'd like to put a notice that this report is as of 31st of March 2020, which is, I'm sure there will be a more report to come after that, which is a final report, but this might have slightly impact of COVID-19 because we started. Now, $1.1 million is a higher revenue recognised from the supplementary rates, Mr. Mayor, and $3.7 million in lower net operating result from the council's landfill, RDF. As a result, we have a 9.2 million reduction in revenue, offsetting $5.5 million reductions in expenditure and expenses through the RDF operations. And just cast in further details, as you can see on the report on page 11. Mr. Mayor, reports look okay because it's just the third quarter of the year. Now, just like to put a notice saying that the full year operating result, what's looks like. So it's outlined on page 10, which means the operating revenue will be $360 million. Operating revenue, we hope, we're budgeted. And now, we, full forecast will be $342 million. So it looks like $18.5 million is unfavorable. So we have a bit of a loss of 18.5, which is unfavorable. Now, operating expenditure, which is $376.3 million, was a budgeted and forecasted $372. In full year forecast, reflections, it's operating deficit, we will hit $30.2 million if that will go. Now, definitely councillors have taken a lot of measures to make sure that we have considered the COVID-19. And we will see now when we look forward to see the final financials next quarter. This is just a reflection of the third quarter. I would be not surprised if the figure will go towards the deficit because it's just the climate we're in due to the COVID-19. So officers have done a great report. Also like to mention that, Mr. Mayor, the RDF have been declined, in revenue have been declined. And we have a decline, which is reported in the last financial management report, is a $5.2 million is an operating result of the council, which we hope will be $12.9 million. So we have a $7.7 million directly related expenditure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Khan. Are there any other speakers on the item? Councillor Ahn, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Miss Mayor. After reading this report, I think in the past, our financial position has been a bit too reliant on the revenue generated from the RDF. I think we must look at new ways to make us self-sufficient even without revenue from the RDF. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much, councillor Ahn. Okay, are there any other speakers for the item? Yes, councillor Marcus, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll talk about the rates and charges, the year-to-date. And you'll note that there is an increase of $1.3 million compared to year-to-date budget of $1.1. And thankfully, that relates to the supplementary rates issued for the new property developments that we've had. This is an indication of continued growth in the municipality at the end of March. But end-of-year forecast, I think at this stage, we don't know. Developers and all around Victoria and that are really concerned about the housing numbers that they've got coming through. I'm advised that they, people have been allowed to pull out of the contracts because of the hardship. So that could be a little bit of less money coming in there. The user fees, 9.2 lower. And I think councillor Khan spoke about that regarding the landfill. But that hopefully will pick up because we will be speaking about that later in the... Of course, the loss of revenue, as everyone would know, is the closure of our swimming pools and our on-course centre. And, you know, I keep thinking about all the reception centres and the on-course centres where, you know, all the events have been cancelled. And it doesn't look as though we'll be able to go ahead with any of those before next year. So there will certainly be another downturn in that one. And of course, then statutory fees and fines. It's good to see that people have probably been watching their behaviour. And it's good to see, but of course, in many areas, there's been plenty of car parking. So there's not been a problem there. So the council offices have been wonderful. They've been very lenient with a lot of our people. But, and hopefully that they will all have learnt that, you know, to all obey the laws. And although it will be a decrease in our revenue, it's good to think that they're all, you know, behaving in the way that we would like them to behave. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Marcus. Any other speakers? No, being none, we'll now proceed to a vote. All those in favour of the resolution? Against? Carry. Item 6.3, policy and advocacy, there are nil. 6.4, strategic and town planning, again, nil. 6.5, other reports. 6.5.1, the community update of the learning community strategy from 2018 to 2023. The report is outlined on pages 25 to 27, recommendation on page 25 with the attachments on pages 28 to 32. Do I have a mover for the item? Councillor Shaw, do I have a secondaire? Councillor Ahn, councillor Shaw, do you wish to speak to the item? No, are there any other speakers? Councillor Khan, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, this is just the final, going out to the community and endorsing this. I'd like to highlight that now this strategy is 2018 and now has been updated till 2023. Great to see that officers have done a great job under the page 27 on the environmental implications. I'm glad to see that we have not much covered COVID-19 though, but we did cover the virtual learning, the importance of virtual learning. And I'm sure that now everybody who's got to report, they will be impressed seeing how we've considered all forms of the learning, such as virtual learning, electronic learning, the promotions and sort of talking about just not just being a face-to-face, but also using the electronic means. So I would say the officers have done a great job and portfolio holder and along with all community members have contributed. And we look forward to see that community can utilise and make a use of it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Khan. Are there any other speakers on the item? No, being none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favour? Against? Carry. Item 6.5.2, the council meeting dates for 2020. Report is outlined on pages 33 to 35 with the recommendation on page 34. Do I have a mover for the item? Councillor Maynard, do I have a secondaire? Councillor Khan, councillor Maynard, do you wish to speak to the item?
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor, and I'll take it directly from the agenda. The reason for this is that this report outlines changes required for meetings of council in the 2020 calendar year due to several statutory requirements for implementation of Local Government Act 2020 and changes to timelines, budget and annual reports due to unprecedented circumstances associated with the COVID-19 emergency provisions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Maynard. Are there any other speakers to the item? Being none, we'll now proceed to a vote. All those in favour? Against? Carry. Item 6.5.3, Lead West Committee Minutes of Meeting. The report is on pages 36 and 37, recommendation 36, attachments 38 to 44. Councillor Maynard will move it. Councillor Gibbons will second. Councillor Maynard, do you wish to speak to the item?
I'd just say, Mr. Mayor, that the minutes of the meeting are now put in the agenda, given the now Section 86 committee that Lead West is, and it's for noting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor, sorry, thanks councillor Maynard. Do I have any other speakers? Nope. Okay, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favour? Against? Carry. Thank you. Item 6.5.4, Assembly of Councillors. The report's on page 45, as is the recommendation, with the attachments on 46 to 49. Do I have a mover? Councillor Gibbons, councillor Shaw can second. Councillor Gibbons, do you wish to speak to the item? Are there any speakers? Okay, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favour? Against? Carry. Item number seven, notices of motion. 7.1, notice of motion 587, audit of dog on leash signage at Wyndham Sports Oval. The report's on page 50, as is the recommendation. Councillor Hooper will be the mover. Are there a second for the item? Councillor Ahn, councillor Hooper, you have five minutes.
Look, I don't need to take that up. This is a pretty straightforward exercise. There seems to be a lot of confusion still in the community as to where our on-leash and off-leash dog sites are. This is to help clarify that with ovals, after the audit, we'll put signage up to make it clear that they are on leash. The amount of times that we've seen dogs running around and snapping at other dogs or children, it's certainly something that we need to address in an immediate fashion, which is what this notice of motion is about. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Hooper. Do I have any other speakers for the item? Councillor Maynard, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, it's, I suppose, known to some that Wyndham is a dog-on-leash area unless signed otherwise. But certainly I take the point that councillor Hooper is putting forward that, you know, maybe there's not enough signage. So I will be supporting the notice of motion.
Thank you very much, councillor Maynard. Are there any other speakers on the item? Councillor Ahn.
Thank you, Miss Mayor. I support councillor Hooper's motion. I think we need to, of course, make sure that our public spaces are safe for our residents to do exercises. And I also think that we should do a review for off-leash dog parks together with this work. Because Pungguk, Tragina only has one dog, dog-on-leash park each. And Williams Landing have no dog-on-leash park. So hopefully this could be considered. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ahn. I agree. Are there any other speakers on the item? No, being none, we'll now proceed to a vote. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Against? Carry. Item 7.2.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move an amendment to 7.2.
Before you do that, councillor Bowler, I appreciate that. I'm just going to advise that I will not be chairing the item. So I will be asking the deputy mayor to chair this item for the purposes of enabling me to speak on it. And noting that due to COVID-19 restrictions, we won't formally move chairs. Councillor Gibbons will just assume the chair of the meeting at that point. And councillor Bowler can obviously speak.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. To the new chair, I'd like to move an amendment, please. Yep, okay, thank you. The amendment is that items one, two and three be deleted and that item four become the motion in that we conduct, we ask the council officers, the organisation, to conduct a review for the second half of 2020 of Wyndham's existing memberships to local government-related bodies and associations with a report to be provided to councillors by March 2021 with recommendations on which bodies and associations Wyndham should stay affiliated with. I'm obviously looking for a second. Thank you.
Second.
Second. Thank you. Mr. Chair, the reason for this is that I find it strange that as a council, we're highlighting one particular organisation, the VLGA, to not pay our membership fees for the 2021 financial year. However, then we ask for a report that for everybody else, every other organisation, and I think we just covered something for Lead West as well, we actually now ask that sometime in the next eight or nine months, a report come to us as to the positives and the negatives of being members of all these different types of memberships. And yet, there's been no discussion on council as to why we're not being, why we shouldn't rejoin the VLGA. I noticed the rationale on the first page here is that it's a waste of ratepayers' money to pay two sets of membership fees for local government peak body representation. We will save $48,000 in a year by not renewing our membership to the VLGA. And yet, we're asking both peak bodies, well, there's only one peak body, that's the MAV. The other one is not a peak body because they've only got 45 memberships. However, we're asking them to get together and to discuss about amalgamating, merging. Now, I hate to tell people, and if you know the Local Government Act, the MAV is a state government legislated organisation to look after all councils, whether they pay a fee or not, in Victoria. And the VLGA, which commenced in 1994 due to the fact that the current state government at the time sacked 218 councils, costing all councils millions of dollars in redundancy pays and that, that they were set up, the VLGA was set up by disenfranchised councillors who were against the idea and continue to work. The organisation has obviously grown since then. I would like to point out that the peak body for Victorian local government is the MAV. And the MAV are actually, and I'll just, I get confused because I've got, I've got three motions here. We had motion one, which only had three items on it originally, nothing about getting a review. Then we had it, which was sent out by councillor Gilligan. The second one was, had item four on it, to conduct a review to be reported to councillors by 2021, again, if I remember correctly, by councillor Gilligan. And then the last one, which includes a conduct of review, which is the correct and sensible approach. Let's have a look at all of them, which was actually, and I do support item four, wholeheartedly, by councillor Shaw, who has taken over this motion. Now, the MAV, we are...
It's a point of order, Chair. The time is exhausted under Clause 17. If the meeting procedure, he had three minutes for an amendment, he has clearly exhausted that. Thank you.
I get a... councillor Shaw, you want to speak to this?
Oh, I see who else wants to speak to it.
Did you, are you speaking to it or? Oh, sorry. Okay, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Can I have a point of order, please? I thought that the mayor wasn't chairing the meeting and he's calling the shots. I thought the deputy mayor was calling the shots.
Well, I'd encourage councillor Bowler to get some glasses and some hearing aids because I clearly stated that I had a point of order which was upheld by the Chair. And councillor Shaw, I believe, has been given the call by the acting Chair. But I don't know what's procedurally wrong about that.
I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I won't be supporting, obviously, the amendment tonight. And I was actually happy to bring the notice of motion forward originally. And because I think it's actually timely to have a transparent debate and discussion about our local government associations and memberships we are part of and use ratepayers' money to pay for these memberships. Asking questions and discussing and debating issues is an important part of the councillor role. And this is exactly what this notice of motion is about, whether you agree with it or not. And just to confirm, I will not be supporting the amendment put forward by councillor Bowler, even though part of that is in the original motion, which I actually do support. But this notice of motion is about supporting a move to one single local government peak body, which means we would not renew our Victoria local government membership for the 2021 financial year. There are benefits to only having one peak body. The first is only one membership fee to a legislated local government body. And if you don't think $48,000 is a lot of money for some people in our community, that is a yearly income. The other is to ensure one strong local government peak body to fully represent our interests as a sector so we can take stronger policy positions and speak as one voice when it comes to local government issues facing the sector, our ratepayers and our residents. The MAV, as councillor Bowler has rightly said, was established in 1879 to protect the interests and rights of local government. It is the only legislated local government peak body in Victoria. The VLGA was conceived in a different time to ensure deposed elected representatives continue to have a voice following councils' amalgamations in 1994. Last year, when I was mayor, I met with some of the people from the VLGA, good people with good intent. And yes, there have been some good programmes. And there is, and yes, there have been some good programmes we as a council have been involved in. There is no dispute about that. However, the VLGA has served the purpose for which it was conceived and should be applauded for its achievements and for those we have been part of. But it's no longer relevant for us to have what is seen as two peak bodies that represent local government and this council. And that decision is for us councillors and not for council officers. I have not been asked once during this term if we should continue with the VLGA membership or some other memberships for that matter. I have asked a couple of times this term for a review of those memberships and associations, and that has not happened today. We must ensure we have one strong local government peak body and our efforts must go there, including ensuring council officer time is spent efficiently and effectively on the advocacy we need done. I have been surprised at the amount of our own council officer time that goes into some of these associations and memberships. We don't need or should expect briefings on every item a councillor wants to bring forward to this chamber. Good governance is about many things, including transparency. All councillors, including myself, have the opportunity to do their own research on matters, seek council officer advice and ask questions of councillors and council officers. For a letter to come from the VLGA before this discussion and vote tonight and to highlight that some Wyndham city councillors directly raised concerns to them about not receiving a briefing surprised me. Our role, first and foremost, is to represent Wyndham's ratepayers and residents, not associations for which we are members and to reiterate for which we have never discussed or voted on being a member of. That is why this notice of motion also seeks for a review to be conducted in the second half of 2020, as pointed out in the notice of motion and also in the amendment by councillor Barlow. This notice of motion does seek to get the ball rolling by not renewing the membership of a second peak body. It's time to send a message that our involvement and support should not be taken for granted. I know other councils are looking at the same issue. I respect that some councils will have a different point of view and not support this. And I look forward to hearing what people have to say because we use ratepayers' money for these memberships and these associations. Our focus should be on having one strong local government peak body to represent our interests as a sector so we can take stronger policy positions and speak as one voice when it comes to local government issues. Over this council term, I've heard a lot about how we used to do things or this is how we've always done it. And that doesn't always mean it's the right way forward. Change is important. Getting the right change is powerful because it signals we are prepared to challenge old assumptions and that we want to do things differently. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Shaw. We have an amendment first of all. I might put the amendment first and we'll see how we go first. Is that okay?
Can I?
Do I get a right of reply, Mr. Deputy Chair?
Before you do that, can I speak? Is that all right? Sorry.
Certainly, councillor Gilligan.
Excellent, I'll exercise three minutes. Thank you. I'm not going to speak to the substantive component of the motion in large part because I think that'll be appropriate depending on the outcome of the vote. But what I will say is this. If we're going to talk about the terminology and the chronology of the way in which the notice of motion has been put and that sort of thing, it's worth pointing out here that there is one person seeking to run for the board. There is another that's putting a point here today that I will always put ratepayers first in every decision that I make. And the decision before us in this notice of motion is clearly whether or not we perceive $48,000 of ratepayers' money to be spent appropriately, best value to them, and acting in their best interests. That is what I will always put first. And that's precisely why I encourage councillors to vote against this ridiculous amendment in that it would essentially mean that we would be accepting the $48,000 of ratepayer monies being spent in this organisation is value for money. And I'll get to that point if we get to talk about the substantive nature of the motion. I do agree with the aspect around a review of memberships. And as councillor Shaw has rightly pointed out, we've not actually formally voted on these matters in the entirety of the term, except for the appointment of councillors to those associations and bodies. They are distinct, that is that we've accepted councillors on these bodies and associations. Whether or not we actually believe we should be part of these associations is a question that councillor Shaw is putting in a notice of motion, quite rightly for review, and will largely apply to the next term of council. As indicated, I'll wait to see what other councillors do in relation to the motion on the substantive parts of it. But what I will say finally is this. We are the only state and/or territory in this country that thinks it's appropriate to have two alleged peak bodies. Councillor Barlow states that one is a peak body, the other is not. And if you did a basic review of the VLGA annual reports, you'll notice quite clearly that they seek to say they are a peak body of local government. And so I would dispute his point about them saying that they're not. So clearly, there is conflict, which is precisely why there should be a merger. And I think the substantive components of that can be dealt with in the event that this motion, this amendment fails. But I would encourage councillors to vote this down so we can actually have a genuine debate about whether or not there should be a merge singular local government peak body and also at the same time do a review rather than be gagged and not have that debate in this amendment. So I would encourage councillors to vote it down. Thank you very much, acting Chair.
Thank you, councillor Gilligan. Councillor Barlow, you can talk to the amendment, okay?
Yeah.
Right. Sorry. Yep. Thank you, councillor Barlow.
You've given me the right of reply?
Yes, indeed.
Okay, which will cease the debate? Well, it's not a debate, really, we're only making statements.
Mr. Chair.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Deputy Chair. The Chair's made a ruling.
Sorry, councillor Intaj.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
So I'm not talking then?
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. Can I just say now, I think it's important now that, not as a motion, but for my fellow councillor, councillor Mia Shaw, in a context, there's a point we have to make decision on $48,000 and outline is a vestus of money for the ratepayers. Now, I have a privilege to be a member of the VLGA. And this one big point we have not made here that this is a body who allows actually community members to be a member of the body. So this is, this is an organisation who actually allows the people, if they're not councillors, they are organisations such as X, Y, Z charity organisations or any business. And they want to be involved and understand the governance and participate in local governments advocacy and media and other side of thing. So I have personally observed now, they do a good job. Now, however, there's a point here is because unfortunately, the membership is outlined as a population. So if you are a population with 200, I'm just on their Facebook page and also on main page, if your population is 200,000, obviously you end up paying heavy price, which is what councillor Mia Shaw outlined is correct, $48,000. But just like to say that I think it will be good to keep both organisations, is my personal view, because there are public members who want to participate and learn the council, how the council operates and all this thing. I'm not sure will they will be a welcome to join MAV. If this is what we're doing it, I think we are actually taking away someone's right and now saying no to these organisations, which might not be appropriate for us. So I'm happy if we want to drop out our membership. But I think giving a recommendation and giving a review that the body should be, become a one body and MAV should be the lead, then I'd just like to say what happened to those organisations who are not going to be joined MAV because they're not eligible. So maybe we have to bring another, another reform saying that candidate people will be joined. In my view, I think I will just wait for the other fellow councillors. I do agree that $48,000 is a lot of money. So I have to say that, look, if that can be reduced, I would like to keep the membership. Otherwise, I will see what my other fellow councillors say.
Thank you, councillor Carr. Councillor Hooper?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Look, I support this amended motion because it's putting the horse in front of the cart as opposed to the other way around. Item one says let's pull out of an organisation and item four says let's conduct a review of our organisations. I would actually much more prefer, and I'm not a fan of these things either, of doing a comprehensive review that's informed, understands the legal framework of mergers or not because there is debate on whether or not the MAV and the VLGA can actually legally merge anyway. Let's do a review of the process, the review of our memberships. And then with that knowledge, then decide as a separate time and place when we're fully across the pitfalls and the services that both organisations provide, or all of our organisations provide, then make a decision. We're literally four months away from a council election and we're talking about making a change that's going to affect not us because we've had the benefit of these organisations, but of the next council group. So I think it makes sense, this item four, I really like it. Get the information together so that then that future council can make an informed decision. That's why I think we should be backing this amended motion tonight. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers for the amendment? Councillor Barlow? Sorry. Peter, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Chair. Mr. Acting Chair, I certainly support the amendment. Specifically, I do because of the fact that I would ask and expect that officers would provide background and information to councillors to make an informed judgment. And I take, I take the point that councillor Shaw has made about councillors doing their own research. But I certainly would be looking forward to officers making a report to councillors based on the facts. And I can see no reason at this point in time, four months out from the election, when we've already been in the VLGA for three and a bit years. So, you know, the essence of the notice of motion is that over the last three years, we've wasted probably $120,000, so there's an argument for that. I would much rather see the work done prior to a report coming to the council that then allows us as councillors to make an informed judgment on the benefits or not of the VLGA and any other body that we're a member of. Thank you, Mr. Acting Chair.
Thank you, councillor Maynard. Are there any other speakers for or against the amendment? Councillor Barlow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And can I clarify how long I've got to speak?
Three minutes?
Three? Thank you.
Don't worry, I'll time you.
To finish off what I was saying before, we talk about $48,000, but nobody mentions the fact that the MAV are raising our fees for the MAV by nearly 22% this year. And I think that that's a, and I understand why. I understand the formula because I was on council all those years ago when the formula was developed at the MAV, when I was heavily involved in a number of their committees. And at one stage, there was no councillor interested in being a VLGA delegate and no councillor interested to be an MAV delegate. So I was the delegate to both bodies, to the MAV, who are the peak body because they have to represent every council.
Well, point of order, that's just completely, I mean, you contextualise that. That's not the case this term. Can you please clarify that? You were never the delegate this term.
No, but I used to be.
Continue.
I used to be because councillors weren't interested. And I understand why they're not because there are many things on councils that councillors are not interested in and not interested for. So they don't get.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Councillor Maynard?
Mr. Chair, and I know it's in there somewhere, but seeing we haven't quoted sections tonight, I'd certainly like to be aware of who's actually conducting the meeting and who would give direction to who's going to speak what and when.
Well, I'm conducting the section of the meeting, so it's councillor Barlow's turn.
I think we need two sets of glasses.
No, we don't. I've actually got a set of glasses, thank you very much, and they're well cleaned.
Continue, councillor Barlow.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Chair. And so if you're looking to save money, well, let's be fair then. Let's not pay for the MAV and let's not pay for the VLGA because we're talking about peak bodies here. And I know there's a line in that item four to actually say, you know, all, all, we are. Well, if we're talking about peak bodies and some are and some aren't or whatever, well, let's not pay for either of them. We'll save about $120,000, $110,000. And, you know, and then we can get the new council to decide at some time in the future, in the new year, whether we should stay in one, two, or even the third one if it starts up. I don't know. Can I say that the VLGA is our leading agency for something that we are very passionate about at Wyndham, about gaming, gaming machines? The VLGA is leading this. And there's an article here that says the VLGA investment in Wyndham, responding to this application alone, which is about the current.
Point of order, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Councillor Barlow is raising items that were not actually part of the original debate.
Yes. I'm debating that we should only have one crack at this and have a review, not pick one particular council out of a hat that, for example, there are councillors on this council who will get paid to be involved with the MAV.
Oh, look, point of order.
Tell me I'm wrong.
And, no, you're not wrong, actually. So I'll just let it go there. That's fine. Sorry, my apologies, acting Chair.
Have you finished, councillor Barlow?
Thank you, I will finish. And in fact, this gaming, just the gaming one alone is absolutely important. And Stephen Mayne, who is a massive advocate.
Point of order again, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Councillor Barlow is entering into a right of reply with information that was not actually part of any of the original debate.
I think I'll put the amendment. All those, I have a mover and a seconder. All those in favour of the amendment, please? Councillor Hooper?
Well, that would have been funny.
Okay. The amendment's lost. Sorry? Yeah, can I, can I ask Mia Shaw?
I'll move it, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
I have a second for the original motion, thank you.
No.
Councillor. Councillor Gilligan? A second. Thank you. All those in favour?
No.
Sorry, I need a debate.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I will speak to it, I won't take five minutes. I've said most of the things I wanted to say earlier just around supporting a single local government peak body. And I think it's important, one, yes, that I think we do do a review of those peak bodies. But we actually start that process by not renewing our membership into the VLGA so we can actually put our effort into one actual single legislated peak body. And that, obviously, that I think, you know, that is the right way forward for this council, for residents and ratepayers. And as I mentioned certainly before, that, you know, we as a sector need to ensure that we can take stronger policy positions and speak as one voice when it comes to local government issues facing this sector. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Shaw. Any further discussion on the original motion? Thank you, Heather.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I'm happy to support this motion that council not renew our Victorian Local Government Association VLGA membership for the 2021 financial year. I have been the mayor and I have attended some of their meetings, but I believe we're going into a new world and I think we need to decide now that we have to cut committees. And I think we all agree that the MAV is the governing body that we look to for guidance. But I think this should be the start and we should look at all of the committees that we are members of to see if we're getting real benefit out of them. Because the further I go in my life, I see all these committees set up and I don't see benefits that we get out of many of them. So I will be moving forward to look at many more of the committees that we are members of. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Councillor Hooper?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm going to give the mover a second by the cherry with this as I'm going to oppose it. Not because I think that we shouldn't be going through this process. I do think we should be going through the process, but I'm worried about the horse and cart order here. I really am. The facilities that the MAV provide us and the VLGA provide us, look, I'll be first to say, I'm not across. I'm not across in the minutia, unlike other councils that have been on those things. But I'm worried about what are we going to lose? Will the MAV, for example, pick up?
Will the M A V, for example, pick up the pokey fight that the VLGA drops? Can the M A V actually pick up the functions of the VLGA? I think it's very, very important that, look, item four is done, so we know exactly what we're walking into and making an informed decision. At this point in time, though, I do not see that. I do not have a justification before me to say, let's do this, rushing out the gate. For, I see no apparent benefit. Other than the, you know, and look, $48,000, I must admit, it's a fair bit of money, but if the pokey's work was $30,000, what other things are we going to lose out on? I really, really, really can't support this substantive motion, I just can't, because we're doing something in the wrong order. It might be the right outcome, but it's the wrong way around. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hooper. Any further discussion, councillors? If, any further discussion?
Yes.
Councillor Gilligan?
Thanks, I'll take three minutes. Thanks very much, Mr Deputy Mayor. Given there was a bit of a lowball comment in relation to remuneration, I point out that if, I don't think necessarily that ratepayers would appreciate seeing such passion in such a way, knowing that the person in particular expressing that passion whilst pointing out remuneration of a different association, of which is not relevant, is also running for the election of a board in which would potentially be of issue in the event this resolution passed. A point I would make that he never disclosed to anybody until after this notice of motion became drafted and was circulated. On the substantive points, though, I believe fundamentally that there is a question around why we would have two local government bodies that are acting in conflict with one another at the cost of ratepayers, as councillor Shaw has rightly pointed out. But ratepayers would listen to this and they would go, what the hell are you on about? $48,000 of ratepayers' money should come back into our Wyndham City Council for reconsideration about best spent. Because that's what we're talking about here today, that's what a vast majority of councillors care about, that's what a vast majority of councillors just voted for. They saved ratepayers $48,000 because they said it was important that we start to look at getting value for money for things. Now, I think that's not a bad thing to be having a debate about, clearly there are some that do. On the point of why a merger is important is precisely the point I'm making about value for money. And the fact that whilst in this context, it's not about ratepayers, it's about two associations that are essentially doing largely the same thing, one vastly bigger than the other, one that has more functions than the other, but two that can, if merged, complement one another. I think in the case of events and activities, there are clear opportunities around the merger of that aspect of the VLGA into the M A V or vice versa. I think, though, on that point, inversely, there is no ability for the M A V really to merge into the VLGA, and that's obvious and based on the size difference, but also the legislated peak body. And the fact that only in Victoria do we see two local government bodies that seem to be at conflict with one another. Now, as this motion quite rightly points out, there are significant issues in local government at the moment. We're seeing an increased requirement to administer state taxes. And all of these issues should have one peak body talking it up, not two running around saying essentially the same thing, sometimes in conflict with one another, or reporting in annual reports why the other one is better than the other. As councillor Barlow has rightly shown this evening, when you see people fight amongst one another about which one's better than the other, the reality is that's exactly why we only need one. And that's exactly what ratepayers would overwhelmingly say if we polled them, or if indeed we asked them. The reality is we've never, ever had a chance to actually vote, as councillor Shaw has outlined, specifically on a list of existing memberships, and she's rightly pointed that out in her resolution, but also asking for a conversation within the sector. And I think there is absolutely nothing wrong with a conversation in the sector about how we unite around one single peak body that actually fights for this sector on issues that are quite complex, as mentioned before, in relation to the provision of increasing tax administration of local governments. So for these reasons, I think we should exit and we should be encouraging a merger, we should be writing to each of the six mayors and saying, do you really think ratepayers would appreciate two peak bodies that do the same thing effectively? And let's have a debate and a conversation. And that's really what this motion says and does, and I think there's nothing absolutely wrong with that. And rightly why I think a majority of councillors in rightly voting down the amendment before should vote up this substantive resolution and send a strong message that we want value for money in a single peak body, that we want a peak body that's going to stand out there and represent us, not too worried about each other. Thank you very much, Acting Chair.
Thank you councillor Gilligan. Any further speakers for or against? Intouch, councillor Khan?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I think it's a very difficult decision to make, what we need to do, and, and obviously, though, councillor Joshua Gilligan has said that, you know, it's important role the both play, and we're acknowledging the both good, good, good bodies. And I think there will be interest, people like to have one, but I would just like to say, become too powerful if we make a one. And of course, you're taking someone's rights away. Of course, there, there has, people have been disadvantaged with it. Now, the M A V, I'm just on the website of M A V, actually, they are quietly good body, governs, and they pay their, you know, fair share to their president and vice president, and they pay their board members what they require. So they, they, they hold that really good, good, what we call that grip and the working style, what you want to call it. And I'm sure that on, on Facebook page, not on their website page, you say that every member get paid $10,487.10, that includes 9.5. So I'm sure that they, the members of the M A V do a really good job. But I'm just trying to say here, since we're away from the few months from the election, can we have a both bodies? But I will support review, I support the review, review's important because it will tell us, it will tell us, but I don't think so we should be a, a, a leader in recommending that, you know, other body should be killed and should not have it. Look, I'm not a great fan of $48,000, I do agree with that, the price should be reviewed, and that could put forward, but I think taking someone's rights, making one body, it just looks too political. So I just like to say that, you know, if we can support the last motion, that would be great, but I'm, I'm sure we're debating on first one, so I would, I'm confused anyway, I would not be, I would be abstaining it because it's kind of a both, it's very confusing in a way put forward. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
You're confused, so am I. I'm going to put the original motion.
Mr Chair, I haven't had an opportunity to speak to the substantive motion.
Thank you councillor Barlow.
Thank you, councillor Givens. Councillors, I think it's a great analogy, putting the horse before the cart. And I can't cancel a hooper for that, not an original saying, but it's a, it's a quite valid one. I, I take on board what councillor Gilligan said about the, the sector should be having a conversation. You're right, the sector should be having a conversation, and I don't have a problem with that. And as this council should have a conversation about point four of the, of the motion. The trouble is, we've already acted as judge and executioner. The VLGA are the ones to get the chop. What about LP, you know, the, the professional groups that we're in for, the, the council offices? And the 22% increase in fees from the M A V? And I understand why, because I agreed back about 15 years ago on the formula, but the formula now is going to be brought up to date. So I don't understand why we're picking on one. And in fact, a, I've got a better, councillor Rowan Lepard from the Melbourne City Council, who's also on the M A V board, said, oh dear, just read it, legal nonsense, M A V and VLGA can't merge, they're incorporated in completely different ways. Abandoning membership of one to force a purported merge with another is shocking, bad faith approach. I can't believe this is being raised mid-pandemic. Then we've got, I've got an email here from the president of the M A V. And the president of the M A V says, oh, I'm aware of the notice of motion, however, I can confirm that the M A V board, the M A V board, all of them, has not discussed a merger with the VLGA, and so does not have a position. Furthermore, as you know, the M A V is a statutory body governed by M A V Act, a merger would require a legislated amendment to the M A V Act to allow for any merger.
Your time's up councillor Barlow.
That was in three minutes.
Councillor Shaw, do you want to close the debate? Thanks.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor. Look, as I mentioned, I've said most of the things that I, I wanted to say earlier, just, just a couple of things in terms of my rider reply. The motion states it calls on both associations to work together to merge as one local government peak body. Obviously, following this motion that they, you know, what we're asking them to do is to look, work together, if that means changing constitutions or whatever that is, that's not unusual and that's not impossible. So it happens not just in local government, but in, in many industries. So, but certainly what we're asking for is for them to work together to actually do that. And ultimately, whether they can do that or not is, is going to, to be an interesting debate, and whether that's on the table of the M A V, M A V board yet or not. It probably will be now, following this notice of motion, if it actually passes tonight, I dare say. But ultimately, what it does mean, and I understand people have got a view one way or the other, and everyone's entitled to that view, but we won't be a member of the VLGA going forward if this motion, I mean, notice of motion is passed tonight. A couple of other things, I'm not really sure what an upcoming election has got to do with us making decisions on what we think is the right thing to do by residents and ratepayers. We're still actually elected councillors at this council and we still need to be making decisions to ensure that we're still doing the right things by residents and ratepayers this term and for next term, similar to what we've done over the course of the last, you know, three and a half years. And obviously, finally, I think, and my view still stays the same, that having one strong peak body is very important to take this local government sector going forward, to ensure, we always must be asking questions, we always must be having these discussions and these debates to ensure that we're doing the right things by our residents and our ratepayers. Thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor.
Thank you councillor Shaw. I'll put the motion which has been moved by councillor Shaw and seconded by councillor Marcus, all those in favour? Against? It's carried, thank you.
Thank you, thanks very much, Deputy Mayor. Okay, we'll move to the next item now, item eight, council seal, eight point one, the awarding of contract C218219, parks minor contracting for a panel of contractors. The report's on page 53 to 58, the report on 54, do I have a mover? Councillor Maynard, councillor Shaw can second, councillor Maynard, do you wish to speak? Any other speaker? Councillor Khan, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, this is a great way to understand that it's 9.9 million dollar contract, awarding for three years into two years for the company selected here. Now that the rate it says here will be paid by our rate, even though we're making decisions here, and I'm sure that will meet the requirement. I like to say that there's a four company that has been selected, and, yeah, look, we have, I was supporting it, Mr Mayor, but just we don't have that much detail of that companies, even where we can get that first page here, it only talks about the total assessment of the company, which is saying the passes, the 10%, 20%, 10% in the system, assessment system. So we'd like to see that in the near future, we can get, if the four company we selected, having a four companies, a passing assessment for individually companies, because we're worrying on the entire, it's, it's, it's been given in the, in the background overall that, that satisfaction of the assessment. So if the officers can do the next round, that would be great. Now, this is a 9.9 million dollar contract, and we just recently discussed how important is $48,000 for the ratepayers, and now we need to be aware of that when we're voting on these items, how we have to vote. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Khan. Are there any other speakers? Councillor Marcus?
Thank you so much. It's good to see the, the successful tenders have the experience and have completed several other projects of a similar nature and complexity for the city of Wyndham. It's never been so important that we have great parks for, for this city with the smaller houses with their tiny backyards, and people can get out and enjoy the environment. It's really good to see that in item seven, environmental implications, the recommended tenders have identified the following, which is very important, use recycled products where available, use of high efficiency, low volume water pressure washers, use of reclaimed recycled water where possible, and plan work to minimise travel and reduce vehicle emissions. So I'm very happy with this because it's most important, as I just said before, that we have great parks for all of our people to enjoy, whether they're toddlers or the elderly. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor Marcus. Okay, any other speakers? There being none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favour of the resolution? Against? Carried. Item eight point two, the awarding of contract C2188/19.
So move, Mr Mayor.
Oh, yep, thank, thank you very much councillor, councillor Givens, councillor Khan, you can second it.
We need glasses.
Councillor Givens, did you wish to, no? Any other speakers? No? Okay, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favour? Against? Carried, thank you. We'll now move to the next item, item number nine, contracts summary, there are nil. Item number 10, questions with notice from the public gallery, Madam CEO.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and we do have a number of questions tonight, so please, I do seek your indulgence while I read these out. With the situation currently underway with COVID-19, those people who have asked questions aren't able to be in the gallery this evening, so we will, as usual, provide a written response to these. So I am going to summarise the questions, I'm not going to read them in full, just in the interest of time, Mr Mayor. So the first question comes from Arnev Saty, and it's in regards to the staff ratio at council. So the management to staff ratio in Wyndham City Council seems to have changed considerably. In 2016, the staffing ratio was observed at six to one, i.e. six staff to every manager, but now the same staffing ratio is observed at 4.5 to one. Has Wyndham City Council hired more managers or reduced the frontline staff over the years? So I guess just in summary, it's an unusual question, by the way it's phrased there, so I think it's fair to say the answer is going to be one that's quite generic, but we will provide obviously some advice to Arnev, and he can prosecute his question further. But at this time, without really understanding the basis of the ratio included in the question, we are providing regular reports on our performance right across our sector. So we provide reports on a yearly basis that outline staffing numbers, including managers as at the 30th of June each year. In reviewing this information in 2016, the ratio was one manager to 10 staff. As at June 20, sorry, 30, 2019, the ratio was one manager to 12 employees. The question therefore is a little difficult to really assess, I'm not sure where Arnev's getting his figures from there, so I'm happy to provide an offline time with Arnev, just to work that through, just to understand what he's getting at there. Question two is regarding a leaking roof at the Eagle Stadium since it was built four years ago. Council's now in the process of looking to fix the roof, and the question is, can Wyndham Council certify that no further waste of ratepayers' money related to the stadium will occur in the future? Well, I think, Mr Mayor, as councillors certainly understand, it's not about wasting ratepayers' money, this was about fixing an issue that occurred as a result of the design and also the contracted work. Council does anticipate that the cost of the permanent rectification of the roof may in fact well be below that quoted amount, and that's certainly something we continue to report regulator council on. Council is also continuing to investigate the multiple underlying causes of the issue with the roof, and will seek to recover costs from responsible third parties. So it's fair to say, Mr Mayor, as you and councillors are well aware, our chief legal counsel has been over this from the outset, so we'll be recovering as many of those costs as we can to recoup that spend, given council was not at fault with the design and construction of that building that has allowed that roof to leak. So moving on now, we have a question from Mohammed Aweeds, and this is in regards to the intersection at Sneed's and Point Cook Road, so when's it going to be safe? So the upgrade of this intersection to include traffic signals remains a key advocacy priority for council. Officers have had ongoing communications with the Department of Officers have had ongoing communications with the Department of Transport regarding the need to upgrade this intersection. And council has also been proactive in developing construction plans for the upgrade to ensure the project will be shovel ready when state funding becomes available. And so councilors have been campaigning on this for some time now, Mr Mayor, as you're aware. So it's certainly something council looks forward to state government, you know, announcing as soon as possible in terms of where we might be available or funds might be available to actually complete that project. So we're hopeful of that, certainly in this calendar year, Mr Mayor. We've also received some questions from Lisa Heinrichs. And the first question here relates to a planning matter that councillors, you'll be familiar with, you've seen some of this correspondence. So question one, why did council send me a letter after my complaint to council about a breach of my privacy, saying that they have not breached my privacy in regards to a planning objection? When in the terms and conditions of lodging an objection, it clearly states that the phone numbers and email addresses are optional, yet you're unable to lodge an application or an objection, rather, without submitting your name, your phone number, email address and residential address. And this clearly states in the Planning and Environment Act that the email address and phone number are never to be disclosed. And that anyone wishing to view objections are only able to do so as council during business hours. Yet my details in the objection were sent to the developer, including my phone number and email address. So Lisa, as you know, we've been looking into this matter over the recent week. The Planning and Environment Act nineteen eighty seven requires objectors to provide their name and address. Planning Practice Note seventy four, titled the availability, rather, of planning documents, states that any contact information should be limited to the person's name and address. Any other contact information, such as telephone numbers or email addresses, should not be disclosed without consent. To comply with council's obligations under the Planning and Environment Act regarding consent, council's website states that any information submitted with this objection will be made available for public viewing, including electronically, and copies be made available for interested parties. Objectors are also required to tick a box stating that they have read and agreed to the terms and conditions prior to submitting their objection. These terms and conditions state, among other things, that by supplying contact information, such as telephone numbers or email addresses, which is optional, you are agreeing to this information being disclosed during the planning process. Objectors are also advised on the email noting receipt of objections that their details will be made public. This is also advised when the application for the permit is advertised. So it's also important to note here that it's councils, now that this has been brought to council's attention, that it's not possible to submit an objection without providing your phone number and email address. This will be fixed immediately to ensure provision of these details is optional, so that's certainly something that we'll be updating as a result. Notwithstanding this, though, there has been no breach of privacy under the Privacy Act due to all of the notification measures in place, as I stated above. Nowhere in the Planning and Environment Act does it state that the phone numbers and email addresses are never to be disclosed. In April this year, the Department of Environment, Land, Water and Planning advised of changes to the act to ensure that the planning process in Victoria could continue during COVID nineteen. And advised that the objections could be available for online inspection rather than at a council office. Council did contact the department regarding the new instructions and also sought legal advice, as we currently do not publish objections on the website for the community to view, we only make them available on request. So the legal advice that we received in regards to this, having investigated the matter, was that council could make copies of the documents or objections available if requested, as opposed to publishing this material online. So that's the response there in regards to that question. I also have a similar question from Lisa Markovich, and Lisa asks a similar question. And that is, how and why were my personal contact details provided by Wyndham City Council to a developer whose permit application I objected to? Will investigation into this take place, and if so, what does the investigatory process entail? So as I've said, Mr Mayor, we've really answered that in question, really in response to Lisa Heinrichs' question. But I am happy to write again to Lisa Markovich and just outline that response in detail. Question two is also about a formal complaint that was submitted by Lisa Markovich to myself as the CEO and Peter Van Til as the planning manager in regard to this matter. And Lisa states here that she doesn't believe that's been a satisfactory response. So I will look at that and just make sure that response was sent out in a timely manner. And also just confirming, Mr Mayor, that we did have our privacy officer investigate all of those matters and found that we hadn't breached the act. So of course, with continuous improvement, we'll keep to monitor those things over time. But I've got every confidence that some of the advice from officers to date stands, Mr Mayor.
Excellent, very thorough answers there, thank you very much, madam CEO. Okay, we'll now move to item number eleven, councillor delegates' reports, eleven point one, restated. Report on sixty three to sixty four, recommendation on sixty four, attachment sixty five to seventy one, do I have a mover? Councillor Khan, councillor Shaw will second, are there any, councillor Khan, do you wish to speak? Oh, is there any councillor that wishes to speak to the items, their reports? Yes, councillor, are you pointing to me councillor Khan, are you wishing to speak? No, no, sorry, councillor Marcus, you can have the call, thank you.
Just a brief report, we had our meeting on Wednesday, the sixth of May, and of course, we did it by virtual meeting. I'm really pleased that our council officers have been working really, really hard on the single use plastic policy. And our committee are very keen to make sure that we now go further and become a single use plastic policy in plastic wise Wyndham. So we will be pushing on harder about trying to rid our society of the plastic. The other good scheme is the nappy rebate scheme. And Hayley advised the committee that on the first of April, council launched the nappy rebate scheme on a trial basis. And this trial runs until October. And I think Hayley advised that it was well and truly taken up. And so we're really delighted to think that if we can encourage all of our new mothers now to use cloth nappies, like people as old as I did, that's all I had.
I remember them.
And, you know, they do not disintegrate when they go into the landfill, so that's excellent. And of course, the last one was on the significant tree register. And we ask everybody if they know of a significant tree within our city, please make sure you register that with our council officers. So a very big thank you to the members of our environment committee, and thank you also for Walter, who always makes sure that he attends those meetings. And we thank Walter for his input, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Marcus, and councillor Gilligan, so you attend a few of these, which is good. Okay, any other speakers on any of the reports? No, okay, we'll proceed to a vote now, all those in favour of adopting those reports, against, carried, thank you. Okay, we'll now move to item twelve, urgent business, nil, item thirteen, confidential business. Can I have a mover to close the meeting, councillor Maynard?
Mr Mayor, I move that pursuant to section sixty six one and two A of Local Government Act twenty twenty, this meeting of council will be closed to members of the public in order for council to discuss confidential business.
Thank you, yeah, thanks councillor Khan. Hey, councillor Maynard.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, Mr Mayor, I move the motion that recommendations of the closed meeting of a council with regard to confidential matters be adopted.
Thank you very much councillor Khan, sorry councillor Maynard, councillor Khan, you are the second, my apologies councillor Maynard. Okay, any, we'll put that to a vote, all those in favour? Against, carried, thank you. We'll now proceed to close the meeting at eight thirty five, thank you very much for your attendance, have a good night.